Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the work session in reference to legislation to adjust the per ton tipping fee for commercial brush, yard waste, and establish rates for other items. Mr. Weston Young, how are you, sir?
Hey, doing well. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, yeah, come before you to talk about amending chapter 141 of the county code, specifically the fees, section 141 dash four, under Department of Public Works. This request to amend comes in two categories, one of which is regarding commercial brush and yard waste and removing that fee, and the other comes in terms of establishing rates for some other waste products. So I was going to begin with the commercial brush. The process for brush and yard waste is that the county's landfill, the Newland Park landfill, accepts brush and yard waste. It is free to citizens and residents. However, commercial entities, typically landscaping companies, have to pay one-half of the tipping fee per the county code. This brush and yard waste is then ground into mulch using our tub grinder, and it is both sold, people who want to buy our mulch. It is used by departments, so Wreckin' Parks is one that will get mulch from us for free. And it also has intrinsic value up on the landfill itself. We use it for stabilization purposes. The more brush we have in increases the county's recycling rate as well because it's viewed as organic material that is not making it into the landfill. So why change this? The issues we're having are twofold, one of which is a fairness level and some complaints we've gotten from the landscaping community. Smaller landscaping companies will bypass the scales completely. They either have no logos on their trucks or they'll take logos off, and they are able to dump for free. We do not have an enforcement arm in the solid waste division, so, you know, we'll see somebody dump three times a day and, like, they can say it comes from their yard, and we don't really have that authority to stop them. So the bigger companies that have the labels on their car, they're going across the scales. That takes extra time, and there's a cost associated with that. So there is a fairness issue there. The other issue at hand is, for the commercial entities playing by the rules, they have to go across the scales. The scales hours and the brush pile hours are different. The landfill closes down, the scale shut down at four. The brush pile is typically open until seven. So smaller companies that are not playing by the rules can continue to dump their brush later, whereas a commercial entity that is playing by the rules is limited by, they have to empty at four, go across the scales to fully pay out. I'll say the biggest downside to taking this half-price tipping fee out and making it free for all entities is that we would lose approximately $80,000 a year in revenue. Typically, that money we would use to offset the cost to our tub grinder. It's an older piece of equipment, and we're going to propose in the FY '18 budget to replace this with either a new tub grinder or a horizontal grinder. The difference being the horizontal grinder doesn't take stumps as well, but it requires one less person to really efficiently operate it. So we would get a personnel savings there. The benefits to it, you know, I mentioned the fairness to the commercial landscapers out there that have been playing by the rules. There's also, by making it free, there could be some commercial entities that are not currently bringing brush to us. I do have concerns about having an older tub grinder, and until we replace it, if we get an influx of brush, which we already have now and we're trying to work through, there could be logistical issues there. However, the more brush we have come in, converted to mulch, that is a way of increasing our recycling rate naturally. The more mulch we have, the more uses we have in terms of either selling that. So we're still getting revenue from brush coming in, however, we would be cutting off the tipping fee.
On the mulch, do you have excess, or are you able to use it all? I mean, so, you know, sometimes you drive by there, there's, you know, a ton, and sometimes, you know.
It fluctuates. Being, it can be used for stabilization, we can also have county roads use it in lieu of matting and seeding. So in some cases, it's a cheaper alternative. We have property elsewhere where we'll move it, just in case we have space limitations. Currently, the situation with the amount of brush we have and the tub grinder being out of commission, we have surplus brush. And so we have potential mulch everywhere. We have a significant amount. But depending on storms and heavier rain events that hit the landfill, that can cause significant erosion issues because we're dealing with steeper slopes. So we use a lot of mulch on the hill to stay in compliance, the landfill to stay in compliance. So in essence, that was the argument as to why we would like to remove that. It addressed lots of commercial complaints we've received and the executive office has received, and we think all in all, it'll be a net positive even though there will be a slight revenue loss. If you, although $80,000 a year is a large sum of money, if you go back to the PKS audit, you'll see the solid waste financials are looking exceptionally well. We're exceeding our expectations, and we're doing well from just the standard tipping fee. Having less landscapers going across the scales would also improve the efficiency of that, so we don't have as many trucks backed up onto Brick Hill Road.
Okay.
So that's the first part of that. I don't know if we want to handle questions, or I can go into the second part.
Go ahead.
Okay. So the other change is essentially adding a 20% surcharge to disposal of certain waste items. What the language states is tires, batteries, and electronics. It mentions commercial and governmental agencies. The governmental agencies and electronics are sort of the partner there. The internal auditor, Mr. Rosler, has given an audit fairly recently of our electronics program. The amount we receive is going up. The cost to dispose has been trending upward as well. We've been encouraging other bidders to compete, but we've had the same bidder just about every time, and they turn up the rate, slightly increase each time.
There's no strike through here, so there wasn't anything else on the books prior to this?
No. No. So the first part, yeah, there was a strike through of the no charge, and then this was adding the ability. So to just be honest, the intention of this is to have an administrative fee when we assist the city of Salisbury in disposing of their own electronics. The goal is to have the city collect their own electronics, and then they can, we'll be glad to partner with them to properly dispose of them. Either way, it counts towards our recycling rate, but as it stands right now, they just drop electronics off as they receive them, and the county fronts the bill for disposal of the TVs that they pick up, the other electronics.
Now, it says "commercial" too, and...
Yes. So on that, commercial tires. The landfill has not historically taken commercial tires whatsoever. There have been times where there is no nearby commercial entity to take tires from commercial folks. So what we're proposing here is our competitively bid rate, if I recall correctly, is about $180 per ton to dispose of tires. We have a program where residential citizens can pay two different fees based on a tire on the rim or off the rim. That money helps pay for the disposal of those residential tires. We have a permit that allows us to have up to 1,500 tires, and we cannot exceed that without risk of MDE and violations. So the intention here is for specifically commercial tires and commercial batteries, PRMC contacted us recently about a type of battery, is that we get the competitive rate. We handle wrapping them on pallets or whatever the proper disposal is, and with a 20% above what our rate is, we will dispose of these products. So we'd be providing, in this case, an option for commercial entities that we have not offered before, and we do so that adds some administrative fee. So in essence, that's what we're proposing. To be honest, 20% was arbitrary. It could be 10, it could be 30, but we wanted to put something that would help cover the internal costs for the county to handle these. So with that, I'd be glad to take any questions you have.
Have you run that by any commercial, any commercial industry, just to see whether or not, you know, what their take is on that? Have you had that chance?
We, the battery example with PRMC, we told them we couldn't take them as it stands because we were not set up for it. For commercial tires, we haven't had the conversation recently, but there was one vendor just across the border in Delaware that shut down, and there was a, for a time period, I'm not honestly sure where commercial entities dispose of their tires now, but we would like to give them another option.
So actually, you're creating an opportunity.
That's the intention.
Well, I guess if you would check with someone like Burnett White or Delaware Tire, apparently they have some outlet for them, and it costs, I'm sure it costs them to get rid of them. The tires, that is, not the batteries, but the tires. Batteries, people pay you for.
Yeah.
Car batteries, anyway. I don't know about the other batteries.
Yeah, it depends. Like, with PRNC, it was my understanding, specialized.
Okay. Batteries. But the large tires, they have to have an outlet for them somewhere.
And we could use it for agriculture as well, for tractor tires, because we don't have a current system, even though we do get them, and we, there is, I think through the Department of Agriculture, every so often, they have an agricultural tire drop-off, which the state usually helps compensate for. So this is trying to increase opportunities in terms of additional charges.
Good.
So you think you can absorb the $80,000 that you're going to lose on this brush? I mean, that sounds like a lot of money. You're saying your tub grinder's worn out, and...
Again, it is a lot of money.
Is there a different, is there a different way to go about this? I mean, without, I mean, you're only paying half anyway, half of the tipping fee. Seems like a lot of money to take out of...
If we had a way of enforcing, we could tell when people are coming multiple times a day and...
What could you do to enforce it? I mean, you could check their registration card? Could you, I mean, what would it cost to enforce? I guess that's the other thing.
Yeah.
You've got to have a cost factor in there. If it costs $20,000 to enforce a year, so then you're still going to end up with $60,000 to the good.
Yeah.
It seems to me that you can enforce people with, other people I know, I went to the transfer station one day without, in the pickup without the sticker. I was quickly alerted to that. So, you know, it seems like there's a lot of things being enforced. I'm just surprised you can't find a way to enforce this.
I mean, we could look at it that you need to have a dump sticker, a landfill refuse, household refuse permit is the correct term, but a dump sticker to dump brush, but you'll still have a...
So they don't have to have a sticker for dumping brush?
No, but again, the brush, the brush has value because we get revenue from mulch, and we get a recycling rate. So we want to encourage.
You want it.
Yeah, we want it in a lot of ways. Right now, we're overstocked with it, and the tub grinder has issues. You know, we're hesitant to take more, but if everything's working smoothly, we'll take it, because that ups our recycling rate. That gives us a free product to put on the hill, the landfill to stop erosion, free product to give to the extension office or Wreckin' Parks when they need, when they're in need of mulch.
So you think there's any that you're not getting because of this charge? Is there, I mean, are people doing something else with it because you're charging?
They may be dumping it elsewhere, and then we're not getting any credit for it. We're not getting...
But there's no other commercial place for them to take it or anything like that?
Not that I know of. I do know our mulch, because we don't have as much quality control. It takes us a piece of trash to get in there, and our mulch isn't as nice as what you can buy from landscaping. So I don't feel like we're competing with, say, the commercial companies out there selling mulch. We are a cheaper alternative. But, yeah, it's a good question. It's something we've been considering, and it, honestly, it seemed like the easiest option and a cost, or a benefit to, say, the commercial businesses out there is removing, is removing the fee altogether.
Makes a pretty good point, though. You know, you've got $8,000 leeway here to find some solution to the problem, you know, in one sense, whether it's upgrading security, and no matter what it might be, I wouldn't have a clue.
Yes.
But you do have a lot of leeway there. Even if you were to add $40,000 worth of expenses to your department to try to solve the problem, you save $40,000 as opposed to just dropping the fee and losing 80.
Yes.
A lot of room there.
Yeah, no, I agree. I agree. I think with the current financial situation of the solid waste division and being able to bank one and a half million this year and looking to do the same, if not better, going forward, $80,000, while it is a lot of money, this seemed like a good way of helping the businesses that, yeah, I agree. And we can definitely look into that, but I can tell you, I've been brainstorming on this for some time, and any citizen watching, if they have a good idea, send them in.
Well, I've been here long enough to know that it's not always been that great at the landfill. There's been problems out there before.
Yes.
You know, revenue issues, you know, of course, and there probably will be again.
Yes.
And if you drop this, it would really be hard to get it back at some point in time. So, I mean, I understand where you're coming from on trying to, just like John said, I think there's somewhere between that $80,000 and zero that you can come up with a solution.
Correct. Correct. Okay.
Any other questions?
I mean, are we, I've got a tangential issue.
Excuse me?
Are we kind of done with this? I've got a tangential issue that I think we kind of might need to bring up, all Westons here.
Everybody okay with this? I think we're all good, yes.
Yeah. So it was brought up about, you know, the original version of the bill had about the demolition issue.
Yes.
And we, you know, we never passed a bill that allowed that. We found out today that the landfill was actually operating under the...
Under the assumption that...
The assumption that that was. So could we talk about that? How did that happen? What happened there that, you know...
Yeah, that's a good question. I think the, there was an assumption made that at the September 6th council meeting after the public hearing, that we were moving forward with passing that. Now, this is the state permitted construction and demolition facility agreement, that we would be taking residuals that are not currently coming to the county, that are through the construction and demolition processing, recycling, and giving them a, these entities or entity, a tipping fee discount for the amount of recyclables they generate. And an assumption was made that the bill had gone through.
Who assumed that?
That's a good question.
And that's what we're asking you?
Yeah, yeah.
You're the department head, so that...
Yeah, so...
Would that be your assumption?
I'll take the blame on that.
I'm not asking you to take the blame.
But, yeah, I'll tell you, we were shocked to learn today that it hadn't passed, but...
I mean, did you just undertake that on your own authority? I mean, what was the...
When I come here a little bit... What we did was that date was all passed, it was unanimous, everybody said they were in favor of it, and we went to the public hearing, and there was no problem. Dave Bennett came up here and performed, you know, the, told what we're going to do.
We never passed that, never, I don't remember.
It was never passed. It was introduced. That's all.
We waited 60 days or whatever, we thought it was there, and that's when it became effective at that point in time. We're assuming that it was missed and didn't get back on the agenda, and we never caught it, I don't know if you all caught it or not, so are you telling us you're not in favor of that now, or...
Well, I mean, this was a legislative bill that had been signed by you.
Well, there's a lot that I sign every day, Mark, and I don't know that, you know, I would have signed it certainly, but it's been, you know, I can't tell you right now. And we just found out about an hour and a half ago.
Yeah.
And we're just trying to search it down now and find out what did happen. But, I mean, we had no, we weren't doing anything underhanded. We just simply thought, when we met that last time, that everybody, Dave Bennett was up here, he spoke, Ruth Steer-Donan spoke, as far as what they were doing, what they were helping us for the recycling, and what we were going to get. We were going to make almost enough. Because of that deal with them and any other large producer, we were getting all of his residuals, which brings an extra $300,000 into the county landfill a year that he's not going somewhere else with. So it was a, you give, we give, and we made more money for it. So, I mean, you know, to my best recollection, it was just simply an oversight that never got back up, but I don't know. We'll have to do another hearing, I guess, or something of that sort now, because it passed the time limit. Well, it has passed the time limit.
Yeah, I mean, well, so this has been going on since November. Do you have an idea of how much has gone on and...
I wasn't able to pull all the information in terms of, because it was based on how much they recycle each month as well, so we would be three months in, haven't billed for February. That's usually the end of the month. So, yeah, we're looking at three months roughly of a reduced tipping fee equal to their recycle rate.
All right.
For their residuals.
So have you stopped it when you found out about it today?
Yes, oh, immediately. Immediately. Yeah. I mean, the legislative bill usually never reaches me on any of these, so I didn't see anything personally, any difference from any other meeting. I realized later there wasn't an actual vote taken after the public hearing, as is typical.
I guess I just wonder how that message got through. I can't understand how that message got through, that it had passed when we hadn't even voted on it. I don't know.
I think what we would need would be some type of report as far as what the loss has been to the county.
Yes.
Over these last few months.
Okay.
If you could put that together for us.
Yes.
I think we're going to have to figure out some way to adjust, to adjust it, or to at least find out how we're going to, how the county's going to be compensated for it. What he's brought in, too, that would not have come here. We also have to figure out what he's brought in, too, that would not have come here.
Yeah, we'll, we'll pull all that...
Whatever you have, we'd like, you know, I mean, obviously, we need a report on it. We've got three months of unauthorized reductions.
Yes, correct.
Yeah.
Well, while we're here talking about, what, what are the feelings on this? I mean, I think you all know what the bill was about.
Well, we did, but there wasn't really an inclination on the part of the council to, to bring the bill back. So it was either a matter of, you know, we held the public hearing...
So you all dropped the bill?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So many companies have...
The bill doesn't need to be reintroduced, and what we really need is a report from Weston that states exactly what the losses have been so far.
If they're passed, it has to be introduced, then again.
It would have to be, yes, it would have to, the process would have to start over again.
Well, yeah, if, yeah, I mean, the question that has to be answered is, is there any appetite to take the bill up again? If there's not any appetite to take the bill up again, we, we report back what fees weren't collected that would have been collected otherwise, but then to Bob's point, what recycling materials came in that would not have come in before, so... May I ask you a question about that? You said what recycling materials came in that wouldn't be coming in. Bennetts are in, in the, and this is the only company that affects, that this bill affects, if I'm understanding.
Correct.
Okay, they're in the business of recycling, so wouldn't they be taking advantage of the recycling portion of that upfront, and then just bringing the residue to us? What's left over?
I think, I think what he meant to say is, in the case of Bennett, their residuals were being shipped out of county.
They were going out of county.
So tho- those aren't recyclable credits. We still get recycling rates, however...
But we're not recycling anything that they're bringing in? They're not bringing anything in for us to recycle to sell?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, what the, what the residuals are, is when they, when they demolish a, a project, they pick all the recyclables out as possible, and that end product, which can be drywall and, and things that cannot be recycled, were currently being shipped out of the county. The, the agreement was, they then send this product to the county. So, so we, you know, by stopping the agreement that shouldn't have started, they will have to start sending their residuals back elsewhere. So I guess what Bob was saying is that there's a revenue stream associated with, you know, tons of residuals coming in that were not coming in previously.
Isn't, isn't this putting them at an advantage over other people that are doing demolition? If other companies aren't in the same type of business they're in, I mean, okay, they're in demolition business and they're in recycling, okay? So then you have people that's just in demolition, that take refuge to the landfill and pay, and are going to be paying the full amount. So this company that we're talking about, I guess, I'll say the name, it doesn't matter, his name's Bennett, they're also in the demolition business of tearing down houses. So this gives them a very large competitive advantage over companies that are in the demolition business, because they're basically in two different businesses. So I think this is kind of, this, this isn't looking out for some of, we're talking a while ago about looking out for local businesses.
Yes.
This isn't looking out for one local business, not, not several.
The, I think the intention came back to, with the construction and demolition processing, which they are the only company currently that, that does that. So while you're demoing, you're not pulling recyclables out of the demoing.
So if the companies bring that to us, we get both?
No, it goes right on the hill. We don't pick through their demo.
Recycle it.
Yeah. Or their vinyl, you know, siding and things like that.
But we get the full tipping fee.
We get the full tipping fee. So Bennett was offering, or a, a entity meeting the, these criteria, which happens to be Bennett, is offering recycling for products that we do not currently handle. So there is a, a benefit for that. So the intention was more, and it does, it does give, give an advantage for, for their residuals, but to, by knowledge, if anybody else is producing residuals, they're, they're illegal in the state's eyes, you know.
They're illegal?
Yeah, if, if they are picking, if they are processing their demolition, there's, there's a permit that goes along with that. One of the other reasons we entertain this is because they are mandated, they have permits with the state, and the state's looking at their numbers, so the, the figures they give us are state verified in a way. So, so we were dealing with accurate numbers we could easily, easily work with, but I, I do see your concerns with favoring one demolition.
It's giving them a pretty big advantage, it really is.
Yeah, if, if you could, with this, with this report on the monies...
Sure.
That we've, that we forego, that we, that we're for, giving up. If you could also supply us with what you consider as your argument for the pros and cons of that legislative bill.
Sure.
Because it seems like, I mean, you know, saying that, you know, we're, we're giving up three hundred thousand, or we're, we're making three hundred thousand, I'm not quite sure how I see that's justifiable, but I, I don't know. And it would be nice, from what Joe's talking about, with the difference between the recyclables and whatever else is disposed of, that we have a, a pretty good breakdown from your perspective.
Yeah.
I mean, it was just, I think from our perspective, you know, we had, this bill had died, you know, we had made, you know, fairly, I don't know, a conscious choice, but we didn't vote on it, and then we found out all of a sudden that it's ineffective, and it's, you know, kind of confusing as to how that happens when legislation doesn't get passed, how it goes into effect without proper, I, I don't know, you know, there's a breakdown there somehow that, you know, we found, I mean, the only reason, and the only reason we knew about, I mean, Ernie was talking to me on Saturday, and said, oh, I've seen a lot of Bennett trucks go into the landfill. I mean, that's, you know, if Ernie wouldn't be, I guess Ernie goes to landfill a lot, he told me, so, you know, if Ernie wouldn't be going to landfill a lot, you know, I never would have noticed that, and, and I don't know, it's just, it's very, you know, Bennett an hour and a half ago, you know, like, like Weston said, so I don't know.
Well, we had the revenue of all those trucks that Ernie saw going, and then we'll take away what we've, what we've done in credit, so.
Yeah.
Because, like I say, he was hauling out of, not into our landfill, hauling somewhere else, so we, we did the tonnage, and figured out what he'd be bringing was over three hundred thousand.
We'll pull all of that, and, and the supporting documentation as to why we, why we proposed it in the first place.
Hi, John.
Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you.
I'd like to ask council if we could skip from the open work session and move the council goals and strategic plan to our next meeting, move into closed session in, in light of the time restraints. Would that be okay with everyone? Okay. All right, we'll move the council goals and strategic plan to the meeting on, on the 21st. If we could entertain a motion to adjourn open work session so we can go into closed session. Second?
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Me as a adjourn, thank you.